Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oops, I'm sorry. Can everyone please stand back up? Sorry about that. Last week, one of the members of our community, Mr. David Tursell, who was a very valued member who spent his life serving our community, passed away on September 2nd. And so I want to take a moment of silence in memory of David Tursell. Thank you very much. Thank you. Rule call, please.
Calhoun.
You.
Dempsey.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Crapp.
Here.
McGarrett.
Present.
Rick.
Your.
Here.
All right. We'll move to announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. I have a couple of things here. One being proclamation for Mr. David Tursell. Whereas the city of Mount Clemens pays tribute to many individuals, organizations, and activities throughout the year, and whereas the city of Mount Clemens lost a true friend recently, David Tursell passed away on September 2nd, 2025. And whereas David was born in Kansas City on December 10th, 1947, raised in Indianapolis, David was a graduate of Purdue University. He and his wife Lila were married in April of 1975 and were residents of Mount Clemens for 39 years. And whereas David was well-known in Mount Clemens for devoting his time and talent to quietly working behind the scenes to help others, he could be found working alongside future homeowners as they built their first home with Habitat for Humanity, planting public gardens at multiple locations, including along the Clinton River bike path, and shoveling the sidewalks in his neighborhood. And whereas the Macomb County Rotating Emergency Shelter, or McRust, and the Macomb Foster Closet also are two of the local organizations that receive the benefits of David's giving and organizational skills. And whereas David, along with Lila, were given the city of Mount Clemens Local Treasure Award in 2020, and David was named as the Global Impact Volunteer in the Macomb Foundation's 23rd Annual Hall of Fame Awards in 2024. And whereas David's compassion and heart for his family, church, community, and friends will long be remembered. Described by many as a man of integrity and humility, he has made the city of Mount Clemens a better place. Therefore, I, Laura Crapp, Mayor of the city of Mount Clemens, on behalf of the city commission and all our citizens, do posthumously honor David with this proclamation and express our heartfelt sorrow for the loss of such a dear friend. I was able to read that and give that to his wife, Lila, at his funeral. I have also, on a happier note, the representative here today of the president of the Optimist Club, Mr. Mike Schittel, and he has a presentation for us. So, Mike, if you want to come up to the microphone? Mike, you also have a presentation to the Recreation Department, right?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hay, will you go up to the microphone?
We had a disc golf competition at Shadyside. It was organized by Nancy Dedenbach of the Rotary and the Optimist Club Kickmark. So...
I love it.
This is the plaque that's going to be updated each year with the winner, and we hope our name will be on there again.
Where would you plan paying?
If it wasn't for...
Where are you going to keep that plaque?
Right now, it was with the club, but we can put it anywhere you guys think we should have it.
It would be kind of fun to put it on display.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, you let me know.
And then we decided to give our... Each club had to donate $100 for a total of 500, and our club decided to give it to the Mount Clemens Recreation Department. For all the good things they do with the children and adults in our community. And that's the motto of the Optimist Club, to bring out the best in the youth. Also, we have a challenge for the city commission. Several of you are running in contested elections. The school district is sponsoring a trunk at our annual trunk-or-treat festivities on Saturday, October 18th, from noon to 3:00 p.m., and we can have these passed out, and we hope to see the city of Mount Clemens represented there, and maybe some of you people who are running in contested elections. And even if you're not running in a contested election...
That's right.
Because all the money we use goes to activities for kids in the Mount Clemens community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We very much appreciate that. Oh, yeah, can we get a picture real quick? Why don't you guys come up here? Yeah, so that you get a better... There you go. Are there other Optimist members with us?
Yes.
Oh, come on up. Yeah, come on up.
They're all there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Come on.
And Charles Brown and Mrs. Brown are a member of the team.
Oh, nice.
And the two of them and me had a...
You're right, get up there.
The younger guy, actually the older guy, on our team, and he helped us out. And the rest of the Optimists, the other Rotary Clubs and other service clubs wanted to prove that he was a member. So I had to go on the website to prove it.
We'd love to challenge.
I love it.
Beautiful, beautiful. Thank you. Saff, get up here.
Come on, Steve.
You gotta take one more.
You gotta take one more. No, okay. All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right. Does anyone else have any announcements, acknowledgements, communications, or reports at this time? Yep, you got something? Yeah, please. Yeah, yeah, please.
I would just like to shout out the Recreation Department and DPEW for their help. The park for our cookout the other day was pristine.
McCarthy.
It was beautiful.
Excellent.
And so I just want to shout them out and thank them for the hard work they do.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. All right. Anybody else? We will move on to adoption of the agenda.
Move to prove that the agenda is presented.
Support. Okay. If anybody have any questions or comments about the agenda? Call the rule, please.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGarrett.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Your.
Yes.
Okay, we will move on to public participation. This is the first opportunity of the meeting that we allow the public to address the commission. We ask that you come to the microphone, give us your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our three-minute rule. If you would like to address the commission, we ask that you come to the microphone.
Nikki Weiss, 18200 Cherry Drive, Plating Township, and Downtown Development Authority at 48 Cherry Street. I just wanted to let the community know that our traditional Halloween spectacular due to our construction downtown, we are going to partner with the Optimist Club at their trunk-and-treat. I've contacted Lions Club, are going to be involved, the Kiwanis Club, they'll be involved with their cakewalk. Roscoe the Clown will be there, the fire department, we're going to move our inflatables over there and help beef up their event this year, and we will next year go back to downtown, to our new look. And it's October 18th on a Saturday from 12 until 3:00. And please, help support this. This is a really fun event. We usually share quite a large audience of about 5,000, that they come both to the parking structure and to our downtown. But for just this year, I want to make that clear, we're going to be moving back into the downtown, but we didn't want to just cancel it. So please, I encourage everyone to be a part of it and make sure everybody understands we're going to be down at the parking structure on Main Street.
Thank you.
Good evening. David Gassen, 403 Wilcox Street, Rochester, Michigan. I add that I've worked in the city for 30 years and also a business resident for the last 20 years, so it's a home more than home is, actually. I wanted to make a couple of comments about a general business item. Is this an appropriate time to do that?
Yeah, please, yeah.
Okay, item 9C is a consideration for sale of city-owned property. And before I get into that, I wanted to say it's noticeable what's going on around town in terms of improvements. It's not just this last week or so, it's been for a while. So me, my staff are very appreciative of what is happening with the leadership and the efforts by the city. So with that said, in that Cherry Street area, which is where our office is on the corner of Cherry Street and Market, this sale of property is proposed, but it's our property, and it indicates on the easement document that it's for the purposes of a dumpster. And there's some other information also supporting the idea of selling the property for that use. Obviously, it's not a good thing for us in terms of building our property. It talks in the information about being a beneficial thing in terms of the exchange being with another business and it'd be beneficial for them, but I wanted to really know it's detrimental to us in terms of our front doors on Cherry Street. We're not a front door to Market Street, so it's in our front yard, literally, which is very negative. I have no issue with the swap if there's a different purpose of it. I know that the business owner potentially wants to use the city's property that he would receive for a purpose to advance his business. That's fine, in my opinion. I just think the negative effect it'll have on us is not something that we could live with without saying something about him. Not just to say no. I mean, I do oppose it, I want that to be very clear, but I do have a suggestion. I think that would be something for your consideration. Putting a dumpster there isn't consistent with what the city's done elsewhere. The dumpsters are in city parking lots throughout the city. This is something that's very different. And there's a parking lot right nearby which would be available for that. It would be probably a plus for anyone if we're trying to create a pedestrian access point now along that Cherry Street corridor, which I think is an intention. The other thing I wanted to point out, in terms of development on Cherry Street, future development, putting a dumpster there is going to definitely deter anyone from thinking about that, which is the parking lot or the area right behind my building, which we're considering an advanced or an addition development, the parking lot where the dumpster's proposed, and then the big parking lot where the church property or residential property is. That's a very prime area for development. Putting a dumpster there would really negatively impact anybody's idea of maybe doing that.
Mr. Gassen, that's your three minutes.
Well, I'll cover just about everything.
Okay.
So, one last thing as I depart. If it is a dumpster, does it include water and sewer? Because it does mention a grease dumpster, so there's a sanitary issue, safety issue, road an issue, which I think is one thing. And then also, pastoral property, we didn't receive a notice about the city selling. I don't know if that's a requirement or not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Charles Brown, and I reside at 20 Miller in Mount Clemens, Michigan. And this is not a complaint, it's a compliment. I lived at that address for 30 years. And from the day that I moved in there, up until about two years ago, when I went down the street, if I didn't hold on to my teeth, they were gone by the time I got to Robinson over there. But one morning, I heard a milling machine, and that machine milled the asphalt, taking the old asphalt out, but I guess they bought new asphalt or recycled it or whatever, and they fixed the street. And now I can put my teeth in before I leave home. But if that is a complaint, it's now the traffic and the way they speak sound through there. But I can live with that. But I'd just like to thank you for fixing the street. And I guess that's it. I'm not going to take as much time as you do.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Marietta Russell, and I'm for the homeless. I represent them.
Can you give us, for the record, Mary, can you give us your residential address?
I am homeless.
Okay, thank you.
And I wasn't at one time, but now homeless. You made it this year a beautiful year for us with the music in the parks, and you gave us life in a lot of ways. Jobs are being now starting to run, but we have a problem with the Rotary Park now. We would sit in the Rotary Park here, the birds chirp, watch the dog being squirted with the water with that little man, and now we can't sit. The benches has been removed. The guy who actually represented that is homeless. He gave you funds to actually fund that. His name is Paul Thomas. And the thing is, is I'm not understanding why the benches were removed. We sit there because we hear the birds and we see the people smile, maybe days that we can't smile, but you gave us hope, and so we believed in you. And so now you're seeing a rebel against you guys? It's not a rebel, it's just saying, we miss you. Where are you? Why are you turning us away? That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mary.
Hello, Mike Malone, 65 Market Street. I'm David's partner. We own the old firehouse. Hopefully, you've all seen it. We put a lot of pride into that property. We've been in town 20 years, and we're very supportive of the city. You guys all know that. Hopefully, we've done a lot for you guys, and we're just asking for a little maybe delay in this action that you might take today. The trash problem across the city is a real issue. Like where do downtown businesses put their trash? David and I have been talking about this for 20 years. There's been dumpsters up and down that alley, grease dumpsters. It's just a sad situation. It's great, they're all not there right now, we love it. Now the plan is to bring them back. That's a little scary. So we think there's a better solution. You know, as designers, that's what we do. We solve problems. You come to us with issues, we come up with concepts. We live in this city, we love this city, and we would hate for this. This seems like a, it's a Band-Aid, maybe. You know, I'm not trying to point fingers at anybody, whoever's idea was, you know? It's a step in the right direction, but there's plenty of other opportunities, there's a lot of other businesses that need a trash dumpster as well. I mean, we don't have our own dumpster. We actually pay for the church's dumpster next door so we could use it. You know, we're supporting them as well because they need funds, but there's other ways to handle that. And the dumpster in their parking lot is, you know, hard to get in and out of as well. Somehow, the guy backs in every other week and doesn't run anybody over. But that alley is very narrow. It's now 16 feet? 16 feet wide. I don't know how you'll get a truck in there safely and back up. The other thing is all the overhead lines, when they lift the dumpster up, they have to jockey it just right, and we're just waiting for our power to get knocked out. It's happened before, or at least close calls. We used to have our own dumpster in our parking lot, but anyways, just, we're asking for reconsideration, transfer the properties, whatever you want, but we really won't support a dumpster. And if one goes there, you'll hear more from us, but we're really just looking for, you know, some other way. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Stephen Saff. I'm a resident at 68 Clinton Street and a property owner at 44 Macomb Place. Back again after attending the last study session that addressed our difficulties downtown, and I've been asked to again come up and discuss this briefly. I made notes to keep myself within the three minutes this time, so... But don't hold your breath. I'd like to thank the administration for the prompt action taken after the recent study session, specifically the removal of the park benches and adding sheriff foot patrols in our downtown. Over this past weekend, for the first time in a long time, I was not aware of incidents, problems, or complaints. After appearing at the recent work-study session, I want to repeat that the issue we're confronting downtown is not one of homelessness, but of mental health and addiction. Daily, our small business owners face a variety of evolving and ongoing challenges. The business owners and their staff are not equipped to deal with the problems associated with those suffering from addiction and mental health issues. Operating a small business or attempting to do so can often in itself be described as a mental health challenge. For those complaining about the city's actions and the concerns of our small business owners, I would point out that in comparison to the surrounding communities, Mount Clemens is the home of a number of social service organizations. These entities are either governmental or nonprofit, all tax-exempt from city property taxes. Instead of complaining and attacking the city and city leaders across social media, I would encourage those who are unhappy with the current state of affairs to reach out to any one of the local Mount Clemens domiciled aid organizations and offer assistance. M-Crest, Turning Point, The Salvation Army, the Macomb County Community Mental Health Department, our local churches. All will gladly accept donations of food, gently-used clothing, personal toiletries and hygienic items, cash, or the donation of our precious time. If these organizations can't use what you'd like to offer, I'm confident that they can direct you to a local organization that can use your help. Finally, this is a problem much larger than what the city has the capacity to address. Instead of harping at the city, those with the time to hammer out complaints online would be better served to contact their state and federal elected representatives and inquire about resources and efforts those entities can provide. Thank you. May I approach?
Thank you. Yes, please. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else would like to address the commission at this time?
Hi, my name is Megan Nyman. I reside 21301 12 Mile in St. Clair Shores, own the business and building at 49 North Walnut downtown Mount Clemens. I will echo what Steve said, I'm sure not as articulately and without notes. The presence of the patrols of the sheriff's department has been noticeable and helpful. I'm rare to be vocal or complain about issues downtown because I want everyone to come downtown. So when I see doubt online that there are issues, there are. And anyone would be welcome to stop by and see some of the things I've dealt with, employees, students, children, getting asked for money, getting catcalled when they leave the store. I've cleaned up more messes than I care to count that are left at my back door, front door, and I don't go public with that because I do want everyone to come down here. So the last week has been noticeable, have had no issues, and I hope that the removal of the benches is temporary, that we can get things under control where everyone feels safe and welcome and comfortable, and that hopefully soon we'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Toby Wolf, I'm at 62 Kendrick. I've been coming to these meetings for a few months now, expressing my issue with the flooding in the Kendrick neighborhood and on my street in particular, but much of Mount Clemens deals with this due to the fact that the sewer system is overworked and outdated. Recently, I've come to find out that you're talking about raising the dues for water and sewer. I wonder if that has, some of that money would be used to repair the outdated sewer systems, and again, I'm still waiting to hear from the city on whether damages will be covered by the city. Nobody's ever answered my question on that. I feel like this format is not the best way for this type of discourse, and I feel that, you know, watching some of these workshops online that you have, it seems like a more of a one-on-one conversation with an issue, and you're not, this facilitates laziness. It drags out the issue another two weeks or another month, however long. Time is of the essence on issues like this. Let's see if we can maybe set up something to deal with people's issues in a better manner than this.
Toby, we also always encourage people to reach out to the city manager's office to have that dialogue that you're talking about, so feel free.
Yeah, I have.
We would love to.
Yeah, we have. We've gotten nothing. So anyway...
Have you got nothing, or have you not gotten the answer that you were hoping for?
We've got no answer.
Okay.
No answer at all.
Please leave your message, leave your number so that I, so that we can get, give you a call before I leave, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else would like to address the commission at this time? Okay. We will move on then to approval, oh, sorry, administrative responses to issues or questions raised during previous meetings. Mr. Shipman?
At the September 2nd... I'm live here. At the September 2nd, 2025 commission meeting, during public comment, the following questions were asked. A resident stated that she has been having problems with the hot water in her home since she had the new water meter installed. She wanted to know if anyone else had reported issues like this, and if she could get another new water meter installed by the city. The water department responded to this complaint and determined that the water meter has nothing to do with any hot water problems the homeowner may be experiencing.
Any questions or comments? Whoops, am I... Any questions or comments from Mr. Shipman? Seeing none? We'll wait for my iPad to load the agenda. Yours isn't either? Okay, maybe it's a Wi-Fi issue. We'll go to the paper. Yeah, this is okay. We got it. All right, we will move, thank you though. Okay, we'll move to approval of minutes.
We're to approve the amendments presented.
Go ahead.
Support.
Thank you. Questions or comments on the minutes? Call the rule, please.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGarrett.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Your.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Okay, general business, 9A, first public hearing on proposed assessment for the downtown maintenance program.
I move to open the first public hearing for the downtown maintenance program.
Support.
Questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Shipman?
The enclosed map indicates primary and secondary streets. Also enclosed is a determination of assessment that was submitted by the Downtown Development Maintenance Committee when the program was first initiated. The projected 2025-26 expense is $81,000. Primary rate of 1385 and a secondary rate of 623 will generate a total assessment of This is a 17% to 18% decrease from the rates imposed in fiscal year 2025, which will cover the projected costs for the period December 1st, 2025 through November 30th, 2026. Expenses came in less than expected, therefore fund balance accumulated from the prior year will be used to offset expected costs in the current year. Cost breakout is as follows. Street sweeping, March 2026 through November 2026, equalling 40 sweeps at $54,000, snow plowing and maintenance supplies at $15,000, and other maintenance at $12,000, totaling $81,000. Any additional unspent funds will be factored into the subsequent year's calculation and be held to offset increases to costs related to contract negotiation for sweeping and increases in other costs.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shipman. Okay, so since we are open to a public hearing, we ask that the public, of course, if they would like to comment on the downtown maintenance program, we do hold the conversation only to the downtown maintenance program, but if you would like to have any insight into that, then you may approach the microphone. Again, we ask that you state your name and your full name and your residential address for the record, and that you abide by our three-minute rule. So if you'd like to make any comments about the downtown maintenance program, please come on up. Don't everybody rush. All right, is there any comments? Going once.
Is this where we make comments?
No, we'll come back to the table.
You just let me know.
Yeah, 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 we will, we will. We'll close the public hearing, then we'll make a motion, then we'll talk.
Okay.
I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
For the downtown maintenance program.
Support.
Okay, any comments? Okay, any comments from that? All right, call the roll, please, to close the public hearing.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGarrett.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Okay, now I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt the recommended rates, instruct the assessor to prepare special assessment rolls, and set the date for second public hearing on October sixth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Shipman, do you want to say anything further on that?
Well, I'm happy it went down. That always usually a good selling feature, right? I did speak with the sweeping company and they have agreed to honor their pricing for another year because this was the last year of their contract, so they've agreed to extend it at current pricing.
Now?
Now, I think so.
Absolutely.
So if there was a rate decrease, do we assume the business owners have a decrease in their assessment?
It'll be less than last year is what they'll see.
Okay.
Everybody will be different, obviously.
But it says by about seventeen to eighteen percent on average.
Okay.
Pretty good in these days.
I don't know anything that's gone down that much in my life.
And then my second question. If I can ask someone right now.
Yeah, of course, please.
Would be, we sent the business owners a letter. They know it's a public, I'm sorry, whatever we just did. But have you as our leaders heard any comments from the businesses?
I have not heard anything. I won't speak for you, Kathy. I know they can come to the clerk and look at the information. Have you had anybody?
I have not.
Okay.
They will also receive another letter now.
Mm-hmm, yes.
But no, I haven't heard anything either.
I have a question. Two questions. First, what is the best way for a business to let the city staff know if they feel like the contract is not being appropriately executed?
Report a problem link? Call one of us?
That's my favorite.
My office, report a problem link does the same thing. It goes directly to my office.
DDA meeting?
And then my second question. Are the businesses provided a copy of what the expected contract execution is going to be so they know what they're looking for?
So what they got in the letter was the rate and then that they can come into the city clerk's office and see all that. And so what'll happen, they'll get another letter for the next public hearing, and then they can come in and actually see what their assessment for their individual properties will be.
But I mean as far as like.
The sweeper contract.
Like how often it's supposed to get swept or when or whatever, so they know that, oh, it's supposed to get swept at seven in the morning and it's eight in the morning, it's not swept. That kind of detail of how the contract would be executed so they know what they're, what they should expect, so that they.
We don't send anything out, no.
Could we?
Something we could look at?
I feel like if we empowered them with more information, then the responsibility would be on them. What feels uncomfortable to me here is I'm voting on something that I'm not sure the businesses understand. I, we sent them a letter, I get it. But we also, they have to come in to find out. I don't know if we could give them more information so that we're, so that they know that they're getting what they pay for. Also, we're talking about this assessment, but I really don't know what it means to the businesses. You know, I hear people say, oh, my assessment is this much, or I can't pay my assessment, et cetera. But I, I was curious as to what like the range is. And I know it'll be different because some people have, you know, two streets for their entrances and so on. But hearing what the businesses are saying, I'm, I'm trying to ask some questions. And God, Commissioner Rick, you had a great idea. I was going to comment on it. The very first thing you asked about, and I thought, could we let them know that?
As far as how to contact or how to report an issue?
Yes, maybe, I, I know it's, it might seem understood and we shouldn't have to say it. But if we could invite them to take their comments to the right, to, you know, the right person or the right place, then we've given them the information, we've invited their comments, and then it's before us to kind of close the deal.
So what I'm hearing is that we'd like to send, maybe with the second letter, a summary of what the downtown maintenance includes, like the street sweeping, the snow plowing, what they can expect generally, right, speaking? Like if it snows over this many inches, you'll see your sidewalks plowed, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and probably the map. I mean, maybe everybody knows that. But I know one business said, well, when I asked him about my area, he said, you're not my priority. So maybe people, people don't understand whether they're on a primary or a secondary.
Okay.
So maybe even that would be helpful.
And then how to report an issue. So send a summary of what it entails, what the maintenance, downtown maintenance program entails, right?
Right, and then where to bring your concerns. I mean.
How to report an issue and then the map.
Of course, they should go to their business meetings, but they could also call our city manager. Sorry.
Well, they, they get a map in the first letter.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so I'm taking out the map.
So if they don't know, that's on them. I appreciate that.
All right, I'm making notes. Sorry, send us. Okay.
I think that'll be particularly helpful for new businesses when they come in too, just so they know. What's up?
Sure.
Put it technically.
Excellent. Okay, is there any other questions or comments about the downtown maintenance program? Yep.
Go ahead.
Are these, I'm happy to see that the rates are lower, but are these rates expected to go back up to the normal level than in two thousand twenty-seven?
I got, so part of it's based on the snow. We can't predict how much snow we're going to get, so that's always the one thing that's kind of up in the air. Now we know that they're going to extend their sweeping contract for another season, so that's going to help.
So maybe. Right?
Depending on the snow. If there's additional money left over, then that gets applied to the next year's assessment.
Are they doing this at the same rate? So that would be the, eventually, I would guess they're going to raise the rate. They've had the same one for three years, and now this is the fourth year they're going to do it. So that would be one thing that could possibly push it up.
Well, it's good to see that the percentage went down considering they've been paying for five months with not getting any service.
Right, during the construction.
With the construction. That's why, I mean, it's.
Well, they have had, I mean, some of them have.
Sweeping, some have, but there are, there's a big portion of them that have not, has, that have paid this year.
Yep.
But they didn't have the service because of the construction. So I'm glad to see that it's been adjusted a little bit.
Right up to construction, they were even when it wasn't, kind of get the street sweeper down, they were cleaning that out. And then, of course, the area around there is messy, so, you know. And we did, we did cut, we did cut a couple sweeps off, which helped with the pricing as well. We, they didn't do forty, I don't believe. So because, just because of the construction.
Excellent. All right, anybody else? All right, call the roll, please.
McGarrett.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes. All right, we're moving to nine B, the downtown safety plan.
Move to approve the downtown district safety plan, sorry, downtown district safety action plan resolution as presented.
Support.
Okay, Mr. Shipman?
City of Mount Clemens received a SEMCOG Safe Streets and Roads for All grant in the amount of eighty thousand three hundred and twenty dollars for the purpose of designing a downtown district safety action plan to determine safety concerns and improvements needed in the downtown district. City of Mount Clemens has undertaken the planning process to create a comprehensive analysis and strategic safety action plan for Mount Clemens. The process involved forming a Safe Streets for All task force, conducting a public survey, and holding public meetings to determine safety concerns and improvements needed in the downtown district. The information gathered was utilized to form the final safety action plan. The plan identifies recommended improvements to curb safety risks such as traffic-related deaths and injuries to pedestrians, drivers, and cyclists. The goal of the plan is to achieve, to the extent possible, zero roadway fatalities and serious injuries in the downtown district by two thousand thirty-five. A requirement of the plan is that it must be adopted by the governing body by resolution. City administration recommends adopting the attached resolution as presented.
Hey, who has questions? Oh, got me, Robbie. Okay, who has questions or comments for Mr., well, or for, yeah, for Mr. Shipman or Ashley? I would just like to mention, we had a work session, we had a very, I wouldn't say elaborate, but like a very thorough, complete presentation of the downtown district safety action plan and by AEW and their representatives. And so we were able to discuss this at length for the work session. Okay, if I don't see any.
I think the thing that is important here is that this is a plan. And in order to implement the plan, we have to be the recipient of, hopefully the recipient of many, several grants. We have a grant to do Main Street, the road itself. But to implement a lot of this would take more money and hopefully more grants.
And many of the entities that have the grants that are outlined in the plan require the downtown district safety action plan, so.
We have to have the plan to ask for the grant.
Right.
So.
Anybody else?
I'm thrilled that this grant money was used to do a study that can theoretically give us even more grant money. I, big fan of that.
Thank you, SEMCOG.
Big thanks, SEMCOG.
That they're looking for. That's the, that's the, from the survey that was given, I think is excellent too.
Anybody else? Okay, call the roll, please.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor. Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
McGarrett.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item nine C, sale of the city-owned property. I'll entertain a motion.
There it is. Move to approve the purchase agreement between the city of Mount Clemens and CoLab number two LLC as presented.
Support.
Mr. Shipman?
As part of the city's continued efforts to support the downtown revitalization project and maintain the aesthetic and functional improvements made along the Cherry Street corridor, staff has identified a need to construct a permanent dumpster enclosure to serve area businesses. Historically, dumpsters were placed directly on the sidewalk, leading to significant challenges including pedestrian obstruction, visual blight, and recurring damage to sidewalks and curbs due to service vehicle traffic. A privately-owned lot adjacent to the corridor has been identified as a prime location for a consolidated and screened dumpster enclosure. The property owner has agreed to exchange a portion of their lot with the city in return for a city-owned property located off Cherry Street and highlighted in the attached purchase agreement, Exhibit A. The highlighted parcel was previously considered for the enclosure, but was found to be unsuitable in size and shape for that purpose. Importantly, the owner of the private lot also owns the building adjacent to the highlighted parcel, has expressed interest in utilizing the traded property to enhance the functionality and appearance of his property. This will not only benefit his business operations, but will also support the broader improvement goals for the Cherry Street corridor. The new enclosure located on the private lot will provide space for two full-size dumpsters and one grease bin, offering a cleaner, more organized, and accessible waste solution for local businesses. Staff recommends approval of this property exchange to facilitate the installation of the dumpster enclosure and continue the city's efforts to improve the downtown environment.
Okay, who has questions and comments?
Is it, is it urgent that we need to consider this this evening?
I just, I can't start the dumpster enclosure until we do this, so I can't start that process other than that. So I'm not going to let any dumpsters sit on that street. Just for background, if you hadn't been down there, there was about three dumpsters that were on the sidewalk. And there was a grease bin that was there. The sidewalk was getting destroyed by pulling the dumpsters on and off. Sidewalk by the sanitation company. So looking to fix that problem and, and still allow those businesses there to have walkable access as much as possible to their dumpster.
In light of the information we received tonight, could it be possible that we table this and that Partners in Architecture get together with you and see what plan they have that could possibly solve the problems for everyone, since they are in that business? I think it's worthwhile, worthwhile taking the time to take a look at that. Since their entrance is right by the dumpsters, I don't think I'd be happy with that either, so. They've offered to meet with you, and I think by tabling this tonight for, at least till the next meeting, is an opportunity to have that exchange. That's my.
And, and I know they offered because they said they did a plan, and I said I'd be more than happy to look at it. I didn't receive it, so I'd be more than happy to look at that plan if you have it. I will also say that, that parking lot that's in question, I can't stop them from putting a dumpster in it on their own with no enclosure. So I just want everybody to keep that in mind. That is a private parking lot that is owned by the business that's there. If they want to put a dumpster there, it doesn't violate any other ordinances or anything. So just like was mentioned tonight, the church has a dumpster in their parking lot as well, so. But again, I'd be more than happy to do whatever you want to keep this moving in a direction, so.
Mr. Rick. So if we go forward with this and you got the two dumpsters and grease pit there, instead of the, right now, we've got like five or s, five dumpsters and two grease pits down near.
In the new street lot, there's, we have room for four dumpsters and two grease bins there.
Okay.
But that takes care of all the ones that we removed from that area.
Okay.
That new street area.
And if you want to leave that like that and save me the trouble and expense of not putting in the, do this, I'm fine with it because, but then the folks that are along there are going to be the next ones in here wanting to know where their dumpsters at.
So these two dumpsters will primarily service the businesses along Cherry Street? Is that the idea?
They're facing Main. They're back.
The Main Street businesses.
Their back doors are Cherry Street.
Okay, okay, the Main Street ones that back door to Cherry Street.
New to market.
Because right now, they were dumping in the dumpsters that were like there on the sidewalk area, is what they were doing?
They were on the sidewalk, yeah. They were on the west side of the sidewalk of Cherry Street.
Okay.
Yes.
So, yeah, I mean, this, this is not an emergency, but I need to, I need to get, either we're going to put dumpsters there somewhere or close enough where people can walk, or we're going to make them walk to the new street parking lot, or take a vehicle or whatever they're going to do.
Obviously, you've thought through this as our city manager, and you have thoughts and ideas and scenarios that we haven't thought of. But I do think in light of what was commented on tonight that I would like to give an opportunity for the businesses that are against it to share with you what some alternatives might be that they might have thought of. And then, you know, once we feel like everybody had a chance to be heard, we go with what you recommend is the best idea.
Is anyone wanting to make a friendly amendment to what the motion is and the, on hand? Because right now, we have a motion on the table.
I moved that, so I've got to, yes, I would happily make a friendly amendment to table this until the next regular meeting.
Prior to this.
The dumpsters that you're going to put in the enclosure that were on the sidewalk, is it in the same place where this is?
Yeah.
Real close.
They were, there was three of them on the sidewalk on that. They, they were.
I, we have pictures of them on the sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, it's an issue, clearly.
And a grease trap was on the sidewalk.
But I, I do support tabling this till we all look at every possibility.
So, well, all right, so we have a, we have an amendment, but we don't have a second for the amendment. Who seconded? Well, who seconded?
I seconded.
Oh, go ahead, so you're good.
Okay.
And this is until the next meeting?
Until the next regular meeting.
Yes, I agree to the friendly amendment.
Thank you. Okay.
Is that enough time for you guys, between now and the next meeting?
When is the next meeting?
October sixth.
Is that too fast?
No, I think so.
Okay.
And to answer your question, Greg, about the old, the design, we did do a. And to answer your question, Greg, about the old, the design, we did do a design and we did old analysis. We lost a bunch of files in twenty nineteen, we couldn't find what we did, so my apologies.
Okay, but I did ask for it, and you were going to provide it, so.
Yep, we didn't know this was even on today, so.
Okay.
Sorry to throw a wrench in your plans, but we really appreciate the consideration.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, so, so I have an amendment, so I just want everybody to be, everyone's clear, right? We're actually, what we're actually voting on, we're just going to table this to the next meeting.
Correct.
Okay, all right, call the roll please.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
McGarrett.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
All right. Okay, motion passes, we will go on to nine D, the Anton Frankel Building Purchase.
Move to approve the purchase of the Anton Frankel Building located at twenty South Main Street as outlined in the attached purchase agreement dated June third, two thousand twenty-five.
Support.
Mr. Shipman?
On June second, two thousand twenty-five, the city commission approved a purchase agreement for the Anton Frankel Building located at twenty South Main Street. Since that time, the city has conducted thorough due diligence to evaluate the suitability of the property for redevelopment into a combined city hall and fire department facility. This due diligence included a full building assessment, a feasibility study to ensure the building can meet operational needs, and an ALTA survey which confirmed alignment with title documents. Additionally, assessments of our existing city hall and fire department buildings were performed to compare renovation costs and long-term value. A comprehensive presentation on bonding options and the city's financial forecast was also completed to support the project's fiscal responsibility. With these key steps completed, we are now prepared to move forward with finalizing the property purchase. Upon approval, the city will initiate the process of selecting an architectural firm to begin the design phase for a modern, functional, and efficient municipal facility that meets the community's needs now and into the future.
All right, who has questions? Jess.
The roof repairs that we've discussed, are those to be included, were, are those included in the purchase agreement now, or it's a kind of a gentleman's agreement? Yes.
I'm told is already completed, but I haven't had a chance to go over there and see.
Okay.
But yes, they've agreed to do that.
Hey, who else has questions?
I'd just like to say I appreciate the amount of due diligence that has been involved in this, the amount of alternatives we've looked at to make sure we're making as well-informed decision as possible on this. I know it had to be a lot of work for the staff.
Yes, I, I appreciate it also, it feels like a big decision. And I think we had a lot of questions along the way, and I think everybody has done their best to answer our questions and give us the information we need to make a decision.
Thank you.
Yes, at this point, doing nothing is not an option, we have to do something. You know, there've been a few different variations here, but I, I think at this point it does make the most financial sense to go forward with this.
I did listen to, we listened to the video, this building has black mold, was that found or he? Because I was listening to his wording, how he worded it.
About here?
Yes.
He saw mold, it was never tested, that was black mold.
Okay, asbestos, yes.
Yes, oh yeah.
Just a statement, I mean, for the past few years, we've passed resolutions about worker safety, and so I think this is like, like Commissioner Fournier mentioned, doing nothing is not an option, and this is something that will help the public, of course, but for the employees of the city, it's also something that they absolutely deserve. And I, I think this is us really acting on, on our values there.
Thank you for mentioning that, because I know that was a concern that they were, of, of the people that work at city hall, wondering if the commission, you know, really cared and was aware of it, so thank you for saying that, yes, Mr. Rick.
I'd also like to highlight how this is acting on the city's long-term plans that have been in place. The idea of redeveloping this site has been our master plan since at least two thousand ten. And we've maybe not been in a financial position to do that. And we may not have had the maintenance issues to prompt us to move forward, but I, I always appreciate long-term planning coming to fruition, and I just wanted to highlight that because I know not a lot of people really read the, 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 the plans that go on the shelf. But it's nice to know that here they are being used as guiding documents for the direction the city is going.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask, can you address a concern from the residents as to maybe why not the gross spec location?
Well, I know this had been discussed prior to my coming on board, and it was important for the commissions that have discussed this, that it be in the downtown for a lot of reasons, you know, one, it brings the people to the downtown to, you know, help the shops and restaurants and businesses, as well as, you know, the proximity to that area and to the other county facilities, that we all kind of work together, a lot of times when you go into city hall, it involves going to the county as well.
I would also add that that building has had a lot of issues as well, in terms of it's old, but also some maintenance issues, there's some flooding concerns, there's some, it's, it's would not hold, I mean, it's not that large either, so.
Well, the other thing about that.
Parking.
The building, that building, but the one downtown, it hasn't leased, I mean, office space is not particularly desirable these days. There's a lot of empty office space all over the place. I don't see that changing drastically anytime soon. This gives us a chance, and, and that's the thing, we are voting on buying this building to move city hall. We haven't decided, or we haven't put out the things on the table yet about what would happen here. We've all floated some ideas, or we may have some, you know, ideas in our head, but so we, we take care of an empty building downtown, we have a decent place to house city hall for the residents and the employees of Mount Clemens, and we have an opportunity to make some money on this property. In whether it be property tax, producing, selling it, whatever, I mean, but what it goes for and what we do with it still hasn't been decided. And.
That's a whole another.
Yes, I hear you, so this is step one. We're making a commitment.
Gross spec location would just be city hall, the fire department could never move to that location, so you'd only be looking at city hall, you'd still have to decide what you would do with your fire department. And I'm not sure much of that building will be salvaged, I mean, you own the property, so you're probably looking at that new build situation again there as well.
I have other ideas about that building, but we'll leave that for another.
I thought it would make a nice GTW, but.
Which Commissioner Fournier asked, that was written down, that was my next question. Not pushing too far ahead, but it's out there, do we know of a buyer for this building? No. Okay, okay, okay.
I'm sure there's a lot of chatter, right, it's going to be, I think it'll be something that's sought after, but, yeah.
I also want to add that, you know, this is a big decision, it's something that will shape the city for, for a long time to come financially and, you know, what our city government looks like. I think we, we've had more work sessions than I can count on, on this subject. I, I feel like questions have come up from residents and I've gotten very good answers from them, I think the work sessions have been helpful. And now that they're recorded too, that information is, is out there, it's easier for residents to access. But you know, it, it, a lot of thought went into this, a lot of conversations with residents. The, the grant money that we received from the state legislature going towards this is extremely helpful, the work that the city staff put in, so. You know, this is, this is one piece to the puzzle, I think a lot of people have different ideas for, for, you know, everyone has a solution to this issue, but I, I do think this has been the solution that's been the best thought out, it has support, it has the money behind it, and yeah, I, I think it will fit our needs.
And for anyone that has, didn't see the work session, I, I found it very comforting to get that five-year plan laid out, see how it's going to work, see that we can afford it. Because, you know, we do have to bond for this, for, for all of the development and the new, we'll, we'll get the building for the money that we've been granted, but we have to do something with it, so. And move the fire department. So I, I feel much better now that I've seen that laid out, so thank you, Danielle, that was very helpful.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions or comments?
One last question. We received this property thirty days from OU approving this on their end.
Well, now we'll go into the, the sale, right, we'll let them know that we're ready to move forward with the final sale of the property, so I, I imagine if we did that tomorrow, we'd probably close within a couple of weeks.
I don't give it to the attorneys.
Have fun, Rob.
Yeah. All right, anybody else?
Yes.
Okay.
I just, I just, I want to share that, well, I love history, and being born and raised here in Mount Clemens, my children going to school here. I'm stuck, I'm in the middle, but I'm, I'm more pushed forward after hearing the comments with employees having to work in situations like this, coming in daily, and not being able to work from home. I, I worked in a building with very similar, somewhat worse situations where we did move, so I, I fully understand. However, and, and I got a lot of nerve because the audience is just a tad bit older than me. But this was the court, this is where they went off and locked people up, and you came in and you can watch, and now is where we ho- house our commissioner meetings and our other meetings, it's just history. And I really, really, really hate to see Mount Clemens just tear down and lose its historical places, so. My prayer is that whoever buys the building can restore it, have money to try to preserve it and make it something that those of us who remember what Mount Clemens had and was is at least still here to show our children and our grandchildren. Because my granddaughter, I, I told her what this was, and this was that room back there and how they used to come in and what these benches were here and so forth, so. My heart is always for Mount Clemens, always, the history, those bricks on New Street, I was like, don't tear them down and, and so forth, but, but, but I know that those people cannot come in here and work under those type of conditions, it's not healthy. It's not healthy, it's not safe, if we don't have the money to fix it, you know, unless we get a grant, you know, and I know that's not going to happen, so I do want our public to know I'm personally, I'm in the middle, this is a hard decision, but yet I'm leaning towards our employees that work for us for their health and their safety.
When, if, um, does Oakland University currently pay taxes on?
No.
No, because they're the nonprofit, they're nonprofit, right?
Yeah.
Okay, um, okay, good to know.
Great to know. Yeah, we're not, we're not, we won't be taking another building off the tax rolls.
Just one question.
Yep.
If. If something happens down the road and you get stuck with OU building, and this isn't materialize whatever happened, what are you going to do with the building?
We could sell it.
If we get stuck with OU building?
Right, because I feel there's a lot of work that has to be put into that building, so I'm just wondering.
You would just.
Just sell it.
That'd be your decision, you could sell it.
We're not, we're not tied, right? Are there any questions or comments further? All right, then we will call the roll please.
Ms. Sheik, can we?
Calhoun.
Yes.
Dempsey. Fournier.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
McGarrett.
Yes, yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Motion passes, we will move on to nine E, purchases and payments.
Move to approve purchases and payments of invoices as presented.
Support.
Questions, uh, Mr. Shipman, I don't see a letter, so I will ask for questions and comments?
Yeah, can you, can you, I've tried to understand these bids on the.
Sure.
Can you walk me through what I'm seeing here?
Yeah, so, just to bring everybody back up to speed, right, we, we had a discussion about the water plant property and that. I felt like this was a specialized sale and that it might be in our best interest to start that process early rather than late. So we discussed that, we wanted someone to take more of an advisory role and work through a lot of the problems that could present that property. I think, remember right ahead, I think Plant Moran Real Point was in on that work session as well. Because they're the ones that I know that provide that service, so it was requested that we do an RFP, so I did an RFP, and I got four bids back. Under a normal circumstance, the three other bidders, I would have eliminated them because they didn't meet portions of the RFP. But I left them in there because this was a very odd circumstance, this wasn't the normal services or commodities that we normally put an RFP out for. So what I got from the other three was, you know, your, your basic broker type situation. So I wanted you to see the comparison, you know, what that would look like compared to using Plant Moran Real Point. I wasn't sure if anybody else provided those services, the RFP shows me that, at least nobody that does responded to our RFP for that, so. What, you can look at some of the broker prices they charge, just a fixed fee based on the sale.
What do we expect to get out of that thirty-five thousand that, I mean, E, E, any Anton Sauri, CBRE, these are all big groups. They're going to make recommendations about what we ask for and what we do, and I, I just, I'm, I personally think that's a lot of money for them to do what I believe is part of their commission on selling the property. But I've expressed that before too, so I.
Yeah, and I know, I know you've expressed that, I know that this has been talked about with Plant Moran Services, I don't think anybody can argue with what we've gotten from the accounting side. I can tell you the amount of savings we've got from the.
About the accounting.
The benefit advisor side, I would expect nothing less from this group as well. And again, at the work session, we discussed it, I didn't think this was a normal process, so. You've got possible environmental issues, there could be brownfield opportunities out there, I talked about how I feel like Harrison Township is as biggest player in this as we are, we just have the properties in their township. They're the ones that control a brownfield, they're the ones that control zoning, zoning issues, they're the ones that have the planning commission. And so there's a lot of things that could come up that could interfere with the sale, and I want to work them out ahead of time, and I want to find out what the advantages are for us you know, moving forward, and I really think that we have to partner with Harrison Township as well, because they're going to control a lot of what happens here, and the number one thing that a buyer is going to look at and a developer is going to look at is how well Harrison Township is going to partner with them for whatever project they want to bring in there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with any of that, but I just believe that CBRE or Anton Sauri are going to do that as part of listing the property. CBRE or Anton Sauri are going to do that as part of listing the property. And because they're, they're in a place to get the best price and best, as well as Plant Moran. But, um. I would even like to see if, if there was, and at the work session, I thought they had said they would do it for the, as part of their commission. And, um, because it wasn't, I, that's why I was surprised at seeing this. And my fault for not bringing this up sooner, I take responsibility there. But, um. Yeah, I have a problem with that thirty-five thousand dollar fee.
This might just be me, but I don't feel I have enough information here that would tell me who the right bid is from. I mean, I feel like there's unanswered questions. And I know you said they didn't include the right information in their, in the RFP. So is that the normal process? We go with what we have, but it leaves me with a lot of questions.
No, for services, we don't have to take the lowest bid. And so what would normally happen is you would, the other three would have been not made the cut because they didn't meet the RFP. I just felt like this was a different situation. If you don't want to use Real Point, then we don't use them. You want to just do a broker, then we'll do a broker a year from now. Like, there's no sense even starting now.
Or do we get more information from those who bid? I mean, or do you?
Like, what do you want me to provide you that's not here? So help me out here.
Well, I think it's also what are they providing us over and above what we would get normally with a broker?
Cause I, you know.
Cause I really would have expected is paying that fee that their commission would at least be lower.
Or then we're paying a fee plus, and then there's also five percent.
Yeah, you're gonna pay that upfront fee and that's for that highest and best use analysis. Now I had, I had one of the broker firms say, I already did it. I already did it in a thirty-day RFP and it, and I think it's a gated community. Well, you see the difference, right? I mean.
So they're not going to charge any commission over and above that thirty-five thousand? This is just a study, then we have to have a seller.
You could do the study separately if you wanted, I mean, that's, that's for the study, the thirty-five thousand, yeah.
I'm trying to understand what exactly we're getting here.
Yeah.
And, um.
This is or five percent, not and.
So they're gonna do the, sell the property for thirty-five thousand total?
No, 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 it's, it's five percent commission. Plus the thirty-five. Yeah, you're gonna pay the thirty-five thousand, yeah.
Or is either the five percent or like whatever the hourly and travel and whatever else totals add up to?
The same.
I do think that when Real Point came before us, they gave a very good presentation. I thought it would be good for us to go to, to do RFP so that we could see what others had to offer. And I mean, it's, it's clear that for all the services we need, I do think that Real Point has those services. I do think that, um, it's a good point that, you know, some of them in their applications didn't indicate that they could offer those services. And we got, we got who applied, right? So I think Real Point is the best option, they came before us and did a good job. Now they're still, in my opinion, the best out of these options for this specific project.
I just, I, I don't, if they didn't even meet the, if they didn't even meet the specs of the RFP, then normally they wouldn't even be in our packet. So we wouldn't have even seen that. But Greg did that as a courtesy because Real Point was the only one who ma- met all of the specs of the RFP. And so, and now it's like.
And they're the highest bidder, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's the highest bidder, but it's because they're the only ones who met all of, are going to do everything that we want them to do.
So if you didn't want to go that route, then I think we're too early. And I would say we do an RFP for broker services, that's right. If you don't want to go this route.
I'm not looking to just put a sign up there.
You know, I mean, it's, I can't guarantee you that bringing them in is gonna get us more money for the property, but I, I definitely believe it will. I think you're gonna get more out of that property by going this route. And then consider something else with the situation here. We need somebody, this, this isn't, this situation on the riverfront isn't just a broker real estate transaction. This is gonna be, in my opinion, that Plant Moran route. Or unless somebody else comes along that provides those services. But they didn't respond to the RFP if they're out there and I don't know of anyone.
I think for me, one, only one vendor met the requirements of the RFP. Two, Greg, you've been pretty consistently good on, on providing good recommendations and you seem convinced, and I trust your judgment on this because of the amount of time that I know you would have had to have spent on all of this. For these kinds of things in the future, I would like a little more details on exactly when we're, if we get something like this where it's like, we're looking at these things and it's like, kind of comparing apples and oranges. I mean, I, I don't think we'll have this exact situation too often.
Well, no, normally it's not on something like this. Normally it would be on, could be anything, could be grass cutting services, right? We put it on there and I'd say, hey, these three didn't make it, this is the only one that, that met, met the bid spec. This is a big deal, right? And we've had a work session on it, we could, we could have another work session on it, we have time, there's no rush on this one. That's why I started early.
Maybe we need to hear from some of the others as well.
Yeah, I wondered, did we invite anybody else?
We've only heard from Plant Moran.
Right.
If we're going to start where every time we have an RFP.
I know.
We bring people in to explain why they didn't meet the RFP, then this is gonna open up a whole nother.
It's just, this is so unique.
This is unique, as you said, this is.
It is unique, and that's why I'm saying I don't believe a typical broker, brokerage is appropriate in this instance. I mean, we, we have somebody who met the requirements.
Maybe we just need to see the requirements then, because we, we're kind of running blind here, right? We had a work session with Plant Moran.
Yeah.
And that was it. And I wasn't in favor of it then and I was surprised to see it now. And I still am unclear what we're exactly going to get for this thirty-five thousand dollars.
And, and I mean, I've got this, I've got the scope and the other things with the RFP with me. I'm not gonna ask you to sit here and try to read it and figure all this out. But, I mean, whatever direction you want to go. But I, the other thing is, every time we have an RFP, I hope you don't want me to provide the, the RFP and then you're gonna break it down and critique it and, right? I mean, that's what we do, that's our job here as management, right? I understand this is a, a different situation, but.
This is kind of unique, I mean, it's different.
And you have time, so what's, what's the rush?
So at this point, we have purchases and payments, uh, uh, payments, um, as a blanket motion, right? So if somebody would like to amend their motion.
I think I made the motion, so I'd like to amend the motion to remove the first.
Item one?
Item one on purchases and payments. Can I say that okay, attorney?
Should we probably do it more positive? You want it to pay, you would like to probably pay.
I'd like to make, I'd like to amend the motion to vote only on item two of purchases and payment.
It's fine.
Friendly amendment of my own here?
No.
Take care of the first one.
Yeah, no, not yet. Yeah, because then we have to do a support, well, who, who supported it originally? You, okay, um, okay, what's your, okay, but this is muddying the waters, but yeah, go ahead.
Well, I guess the only question I have for this then is, could, would it be possible for us to just consider these separately tonight? And if that vote fails.
I know what we're doing.
Well, you're just removing one and then it's up in the air.
Second one, and then we can, then somebody after that is handled.
Well, then make a motion for that one. Okay, thank you, then yes, I agree.
Okay.
So you support a motion to amend.
I know what they want.
Okay. All right, I appreciate it.
So we're voting on item two.
Right, item two, Weingartz. All right, anybody have any questions or comments on item two and the motion? I was gonna say.
I'd like to see them all.
All right. Call the roll please.
Dempsey. Yes. Fournier.
Yes.
Cropp.
Yes.
McGarry.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Calhoun.
Okay, I, well, let's see here, so I, I would move to approve item two, item one.
Move to approve it, is that what you wanted?
You want to approve it after we table?
Or I thought, are we gonna, no, it wasn't tabled. It was just removed, it was just removed from the list. So you would like to make a motion to approve it?
I like to move, make motions.
Okay. All right. Uh, do we have a support for?
Support.
Okay. All right. All right, so we have a motion on the table to approve item one. So we will, does anybody have any further ca- questions or comments? Well, I want to know if we don't approve this tonight, then does it die and we can't revisit it?
Yeah, we would know.
We're not, we're asking for more additional information.
Well, but we have a motion now on the table with a support.
But it's comment section, so I, the problem I have with it, I'm not saying that it won't even end up being, that might be the.
But that's what I'm asking legal though first, because if we say no.
Legal?
If we say no to this.
Oh, I see, I don't want to vote it down.
Right, if we vote it down, then.
Trouble, I'll just move.
Yes, thank you.
Table it.
Table it.
You want to?
Yeah, so instead of voting on it, which could end the discussion, do we want to table it until we have more information? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, okay.
No.
All right, so is that your friendly amendment?
Yeah.
And then do you support it?
I support that one.
Okay. All right, so now we have a motion to table item one. Everybody clear on that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, call the roll please.
Okay. Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Cropp.
Yes.
McGarry.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
All right, let's go to an easy one, consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Call the roll.
Yes.
Cropp.
Yes.
McGarry.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Yor.
Yes.
Calhoun. Dempsey.
Yes.
All right, can you make this one easy? Cause city managers report.
Does she want to table it?
No.
There you go.
All right.
The next Historical Commission Speaker Series will be hosted by the Mount Clemens Public Library on Saturday, September twentieth at eleven AM with Brittany Fields, Head of Local History and Genealogy. The topic will be researching your home for historical plaque. Learn how to dig into archives, maps and resources to discover stories behind your property. Whether your home is a century-old gem or a modern marble, this event will help you connect with the past. Don't miss out on this exciting opportunity to explore the rich history of Mount Clemens right at your doorstep. Attendees are invited to stay after the event and conduct research in the local history room. Free registration can be done at www.evenbright.com. The paving of local streets, Roslin, Cumberland, Euclid, Judge, Balmoral and miscellaneous street patching projects are expected to be complete and open to traffic within the next week. Hubbard is currently open to westbound traffic between North Avenue and Eldred Street while contractors replace broken concrete in that area. Once eastbound lane is complete, traffic will switch. This project is expected to be complete by the end of October. The paving of westbound lane of Grand Avenue is expected to begin the week of September fifteenth. We appreciate everyone's patience during this construction project as we understand that the inconvenience that it does cause you. As fall approaches, um, we would like to remind everyone not to rake their leaves into the street. Please place them in a paper yard waste bag or thirty-two gallon can marked as yard waste and place at the curb on your regular trash pickup day. Over recreation, we have the Senior Lunch and Learn Program on September twenty-fourth, beginning at eleven AM at the Carnes Community Center located at fifty-eight Orchard Street in Mount Clemens. Enjoy a complimentary meal while we discuss valuable information about the city services available to you in Mount Clemens. Absentee ballots for November fourth city election will be mailed out next week. Voters may return their ballots postage-free by mail or by utilizing one of the secure twenty-four hour ballot drop boxes located in front of City Hall or the Carnes Community Center. Like to congratulate recent retiree Vicky Geisler after thirty-eight years of service as the Water and Sewer Administrative Assistant. Thank you, Vicky, for your many years of service to the city of Mount Clemens. And we'd like to welcome new team member Alexis Stillwell, who will be replacing Vicky as the Water and Sewer Administrative Assistant. And our community events, we have the Italian Heritage Street Fair, Saturday, October fourth, twelve PM to nine PM. On McComb Place next to the Anton Art Center, featuring food vendors, local crafters, music and fun.
All right, anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Shipman? Okay. All right, this is the second opportunity of the evening for the public to address the commission. Again, we ask you to come to the microphone, give us your full name and residential address. If you would like to address the, oh, and abide by our two-minute rule. Um, if anyone would like to address the commission at this time, come on up. Oh, okay. All right, great. Moving on to Commissioner comments, Commissioner Yor.
Thank you to Vicky for her years of service and welcome to Alexis. Um, and thank you to all of you who joined us here tonight. It's always great to have people in the audience and I always learn something as you come to the microphone, so thank you. I'm happy to hear that we're gonna partner with the Optimists for the trunk or treat, I think that'll be a great opportunity. And it was a big bather weekend for all of you that, um, love Mount Clemens. Alumni, the reunion, this is great. And I spent a lot of time uptown and did see a lot of foot patrol, thanked our officers for what they were doing. So, um, we really appreciate that. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. McGarry.
Thank you. I'm hoping that those who are unhoused that were here in the meeting, watch the video. What I'd like to do is meet you here, excuse me, meet you here at five o'clock. I have some wonderful news, wonderful news. There is funding that's gonna help our city a lot. It's coming through, we just went through the training today for it. I'd like to encourage you between now and then, especially if you have social security, get your birth certificate, obtain your birth certificate, um, and just have some ID. Just have some ID. Um, and for those who are physically able to work, try and, and obtain some type of income. And I will meet you personally here at five o'clock, um, prior to our next meeting for thirty minutes to share what that news is coming down from McComb County to help those who are unhoused. That's all I wanted to share. Just continue to be good neighbors here, supporting Mount Clemens. This is where we live. Don't rake the leaves in the street, but it's fun to rake leaves with your neighbors. So have a good, uh, next few weeks.
Thank you.
Yes, I just want to say too, on this homeless situation, I think everyone out there, especially in social media, have to be careful not to broad brush all homeless people as the same. We shouldn't do it in any situation, right? That, and we certainly shouldn't do it then. Our response to this situation was because we were having alleged criminal activity going on in that park. And so we responded. And, um, I hope the benches can come back. I hope that the situation dies down and the problem causers move on. And I hope McComb County's new program can help those that need help. But, um, it, it is not directed at many of those people out there. It is directed at those that were causing serious problems for our businesses and for our residents. And, um, a lot of, lot went on tonight. But I will also say, the highlight of my night was Charles Brown on Miller Street coming and thanking us for resurfacing that road. And, um, as just living a street away there, I appreciate it as well. So, um, I'm so happy that he, cause when he first walked up, I thought, oh boy, here now what? But, um, I was very, very pleased that, that, that he was happy about it, thank you.
I'm glad he doesn't have to hold on to his teeth anymore.
Amen, yes. I'll never. Amen. Yes. I'll never look at him the same after.
All right, Commissioner Dempsey.
Nice street, um, fair, craft fair this weekend. Uh, it was packed. I was, um, pleasantly surprised, you know? I, I would like to see us take a look at, with the benches to see if we can get the seating that has a divider in between and replace those seats, you know, so that at least there is a place for people to sit who are downtown. I've, I've read all the Facebook, um, things that were out there and I have to agree with Mr. Saff, you know, on, on that, that a lot of people, it's easy to complain on Facebook, but you're not down here experiencing it. But I would like to say that there are people that do go there and they do like to sit in the, in the park and have an ice cream or whatever have you. So if we can maybe just take a look and see what it would be to get the seats back, but with a divider in between. There's so many places that have that. At least people can sit. It does look not very nice right now when you, when you look in the park. And I'm also afraid someone's going to fall and, and fall on one of those things and, on the ends and hurt themselves quite, you know? I mean, especially, you know, they could have an issue there, so, um, can we take a look at that? Sure. I thought the whole bench was going, but it's not.
They're in concrete, so, um, the thought was everything was pulled in a fashion that it could be put back.
Yeah.
Right? This was, let's see if this works. Let's see how you feel about it. We've done dividers before. I'm not, I guess, tell me what you think the dividers are going to do. What's the?
Well, these people aren't going to be laying down. They're going to be, be able to sit.
Right.
You know, I mean.
So just, just to go back to the work session, because it was talked about removing benches and also removing the areas they could sit, which included cappers on the retaining walls. So that's, you know, we, you guys got to let me know, because I had pretty clear direction after the work session and now I feel like things are changing a little bit.
No, I don't think they're changing. I just think if you go down there and take a look, it looks tacky the way it is right now.
And so this is a test, so we can, if you want, I mean, I have two choices. Either we dig out the footings that hold the benches or we cut the pipes off that are holding it up. Neither one is a really good choice.
Neither one's good.
So this was a test, right? And to see how things go and then we can decide what we want to do next. They can be put back or we can put something different in. But when we left this work session, it was very clear that we wanted to eliminate places to sit. Not just benches, okay? So, but I, before I run out now and I start, right? Let's, then maybe we're going to have another work session and we're going to decide what we're going to do, because, right? I don't, I'm not going to keep every week changing something.
I don't think we're asking you to change things. We tried something and we're coming back with feedback that says it looks tacky. What can we do? I mean, that's all. If the whole bench was gone, it wouldn't.
Pull the benches out and then we can fill in the pavers as best we can. I could cut the benches off with a sawzall or I can put the bench seats back on the way they were. Or we can look at a completely different option altogether. So.
Well, you've got three options, so.
Well, but I've got seven opinions, so I want four opinions to match and then I'll do what you want me to do.
We can talk about, I'm just saying, you know, if you want feedback, fine. If you don't want feedback, then don't ask.
I want feedback, but I want, I want feedback. Let's do another work session then, and I want to know from the majority of this commission what you want administration to do. Again, text up.
All right, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Calhoun.
Everyone had opinions on the benches and I felt like I had the strongest one, but I don't want to beat the dead horse, so. Um, what I will say is, um, you know, I, I do think that there are, there were a lot of good options that were presented at the last work session. I agreed with all of them except hostel design and in the future, I'm still opposed to that. You know, but I, I think continuing to consider this issue, it doesn't, it doesn't change the fact that these other steps that are being taken will be helpful.
Right.
And that the city immediately stepped in to fix the problem. It was just one small part of it that I think, um, that I personally didn't agree with. To change subjects, the, uh, Community Cookout Event was a fantastic success. We had people from every corner of the city, um, who, who came and enjoyed good barbecue from Buck and Dinks, who enjoyed delicious options from Craven Raven, um, uh, music performances, poetry, um, listen to me get up there twice. We had, um, Representative Denise Spencer, Senator Hertel's office, um, Michigan Health and Human Services was there, the zoo, um, a lot of other organizations, and so it came together really nicely. And of course, Family Youth Interventions did so much work to help put that on. And so thankful to, um, all those in the community who came, uh, those on the commission who came. Um, it was, it was a fantastic event and hopefully we'll be looking at doing it again. There were a ton of other events going on this weekend. I mean, people were just going from event to event to event to event and just apologizing that they couldn't come to an event because they were busy helping out at another event. Um, that's just fantastic, so. Um, you know, I love to see that kind of activity in our city and I love to see us continue to come together. So that was great. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rick.
Well, uh, one upcoming opportunity for us to come together is the upcoming Santa Claus Parade, our 50th. And, uh, happy to say our new, we just had our newest participant register, the Crocker House, thrilled to have them in the Santa Parade. Uh, for more information, mountclemensantaeparade.com, uh, looking for volunteers, looking for folks to march. And of course, we will not say no to sponsors. Uh, also, as alluded to, it was very busy, it's been a very busy last couple of weeks between the all-class reunion, the grand prix, the Community Cookout, the, went to the, see the Bathers game. They had a rough game, but they had some good plays. And I also want to specifically commend them for their professional conduct on the field. They went out there and they knew what play they were making. And that is not something I could say about some other teams that were around at the same time. I appreciate, I appreciate that. Um, uh, I did see the library, I couldn't, I was looking through my phone, I couldn't find the date. I know the library's got some upcoming, uh, resource opportunity briefs for folks experiencing homelessness. Um, I tried to find the dates, I couldn't have it. I know it's on their Facebook somewhere. Speaking of the library, I'd also like to thank Senator Hertel for coming out to the library to speak with Mount Clemens residents and hear our concerns, take them back to Lansing. It's always appreciated when legislators come out here. Let's see. Uh, also, uh, I did want to specifically, uh, highlight, uh, McComb County's Planning and Economic Development, uh, folks. Got a chance to talk with one of their program directors. A lot of times people think, oh, they're for like big, big businesses, medium-sized businesses, but they have resources and stuff available and information and can help point small businesses in the direction they need to go. So if you're looking for how to deal with state bureaucracy or looking for data, which they have a lot of data in their data, people love what they do. They will share so much data, uh, or other information or ideas. It's a good resource that I think a lot of our small businesses may not realize is available to them. And I would encourage them to, uh, reach out. I'd like to give a special shout out to the residents who engage online in a constructive manner. I know it's not everyone and I know it's not always easy, uh, but I really do appreciate how many good recommendations I've been able to filter through to the city administration because the residents are engaged in meaningful discussion. Uh, particularly as this homelessness issue has come up, I, I appreciate several of our, uh, local homeless who have reached out to me through Facebook and been able to give me their perspective and a much deeper understanding of the issues that I did not have, given my life experience. And I would encourage people to continue to do so. I'd like to thank Sergeant Jones and his team. They, you guys, one, you keep us safe, obviously. Uh, so thanks for doing what you do, but also, uh, for the help, uh, downtown, specifically with Rotary Park. Uh, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback, uh, on the results. And I, I, um, was also happy to hear that, you know, you guys have information and resources available to connect folks with mental, community, mental health. That is what is needed, uh, for that particular person you're responding to. It's, uh, always reassuring to see, uh, folks in need get connected with the resources they need. Fall Art and Craft Fair was awesome and I was thrilled to see the beautification committee there as well. And I saw they had several new members on their signup sheet. And if you're interested in serving on our, our boards, committees, or commissions, you can find more information by contacting a member or by visiting our website or calling City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for the length.
That's all right, that's all right. Um, I'm going to start with, I asked Sergeant Jones to put together a few, um, statistics about, uh, the policing, um, can, especially with Rotary Park, but considered downtown um, as a whole with our, um, situation from the last meeting. And there have been zero calls to Rotary Park since the work session last week. Um, so I would say that that is a significant, um, a significant improvement. They have had 27 self-initiated business checks at Rotary Park and downtown, which, which included, um, foot patrol. This does not include regular patrol passes through all shifts. No issues were observed and no citations issued. So yeah, they've had, they did have two incidences on nine, 10, and nine, 12. Um, both were called and, um, and so, but not, they were not at Rotary Park. Um, so I just want to thank, um, Sergeant Jones, um, and all of the deputies that have been a part of that and who have been helpful in making sure that our city is safe. And yeah, thank you. Um, on to other, um, things. Uh, on Wednesday, we will have, um, the State of the City speech at the Emerald Theater. If you're interested in attending that speech, it starts at three o'clock. Tickets are for sale. I don't remember if they're 30 or they're 40, um, but they are at, uh, they're for sale at connectmcom.com. And you do need to buy them in advance. Uh, you can also come to Madison's afterwards, we'll have an Afterglow and, um, Kathleen Marie will be playing and that is free. October, uh, I will have coffee talks on Thursday, October 9th at 6:30, um, at Black Cat Coffee. And Tuesday, October 14th at 9:30 AM, John's Family Grill. I too, uh, spent a lot of time at the Fall Art and Craft Show, um, and talked to a lot of people, um, including a lot of residents. And when I was doing that, um, had a lot of feedback, um, from two main issues, because I think they've hit the paper. So, um, of course, the removal of the benches and the unhoused. But I think people, when we actually spoke about it and actually had a dialogue about it, I encouraged people to watch our work sessions and we're, watch our commission meetings, because we don't make decisions just, you know, very flippantly, right? We, we, I think this body does a great job at really trying to understand the issue, so. So I wa, I encouraged people and I'm encouraging everyone on, on, um, who's watching this as well. I am very pleased and I'm very proud of this commission, um, for the OU building purchase. Um, I think that, uh, it's going to provide a lot of really exciting, um, opportunities in the future for the city, so. So thank you for that. And, um, I also want to thank the staff, because that has not been, that's been a very long process and a very, um, significant amount of work to get that done, so, so thank you very much. Um, I also would like to thank the Optimist Club for their donation to the Recreation Department. Thank you very much for that. Um, that was, it's, and thank you for using the Shady Side Disc Golf, Disc Golf. Um, that was really, uh, a cool tournament to have between the, um, service organizations. I like seeing those, seeing you interact. That's really great, so thank you for that. And don't forget that Thursday of this week is the one fundraiser of the Anton Art Center. Commissioner Fournier was slacking on her commercial. It's her one fundraiser of the year and it's always such a fun event. So if you have the opportunity to attend, you can get your, um, tickets online, but you can also buy them at the door at, for the Anton Art Party. It's Thursday at six, six.
If you're.
I thought it was five, too.
You can go at five.
Oh, okay. Thursday at six. Um, it, it, you won't want to miss it. It's super fun. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.